I pledge with
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,
with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, roll call, please.
Earl, Earline, absent. Feeny, absent and excused. Maloney.
Here.
Manel.
Here.
John, absent and excused. White.
Here.
Zagami.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, public comments at this time. Anybody in the public? You guys can talk too if you want. You're public. But anybody wants to talk at this time? Anybody on social media that wants to say something? Any hands up? Nope. Anybody else in the public? Hearing none? Move on to new business? Amendment to the capital improvement plan to qualify a project on Ross Avenue for possible grant funds.
Do you want a quick background synopsis? Um, the city of Schofield approached us about submitting Ross Avenue between Metro Drive and Alderson Street as a joint project. I guess it'd be redoing both of those intersections and then repaving the road in between those two intersections. We'd be applying for the, uh, the state's local road improvement program supplemental grant program. Uh, where the city of Schofield has already indicated they would only move forward with the project if at least eighty percent of the funding was achieved. So, um, essentially it'd be
Through the state or, or, and with us? No?
So it'd be eighty percent state funded, oh, twenty percent municipality. So each municipality would have ten percent of the project.
That's a sweet deal.
You have that, excuse me, you had a cost for a sidewalk?
Yeah, so that includes a sidewalk, um, through that section.
From there to there?
Between, uh, Alderson and Metro Drive, end of Pine Street, that, that length on Ross Avenue.
Okay.
On, on
On both sides?
Both sides or one side?
I, in the estimate, I put it on both sides. Um, we could redo it.
Just on the south side?
Yeah.
I'll be right, yeah. Well, right?
Well, I mean, the north side has Green Heck on it, so, I mean, they may say, hey, we want this, so people can walk between our facilities.
Undeal, sure.
Uh, so.
Yeah, it probably would make sense, yeah.
Yeah, and a couple of years ago Schofield did, um.
I'm just thinking by kunson and stuff like that.
How many square foot is that? Am I reading it right? Fifteen thousand something or a hundred fifty thou?
The square footage?
Yeah. You got a fifteen thousand? Am I reading it right?
I had thirty-five thousand five hundred seventy square feet of sidewalk.
Where is it?
Uh, where, where the hand is.
Uh, under roadway?
Sidewalk.
Second one from the bottom?
Yeah, okay.
That one, right there.
Yeah, okay, okay. And then you had fifteen thousand clearing and grubbing? Or how much clearing and grubbing we got in there?
I mean, maybe at those intersections a little bit based on how it goes. I mean, it's a
I thought, I thought it was, but that's okay.
Yeah.
Those are pretty clear intersections, both of them.
Well, the, the thought is if we need to add turn lanes or, um, you know, if we ever look at a roundabout or something, I know that was something that was in the
It's Me- Metro is down the hill bar, right?
Correct, yeah. So if there's
So we're not doing roundabouts? What are we doing?
Well, the thought would be to put roundabouts in more than likely, um.
Well, more than likely?
Or yes.
Yes or no? Okay.
Yeah, so the estimate i- is looking at roundabouts, which would probably be the most
Yeah.
expansive. If we put pavement back as is, it'd be less, but again, with the grant application, once you say, this is my number.
But, but, I mean
You've never estimated, yeah, then you've kind of
Would, would they even wanna do it if it wasn't a roundabout?
I, I doubt it. No, I, I know that was one thing that the city of Schofield has shown interest in is
Oh, I, well, us too.
And, and, yeah.
We want them, yeah.
I think roundabouts gonna work out great if the truck's coming out?
Yes, definitely. Yep.
Yeah.
Lot of truck traffic that comes in.
Mm-hmm. I totally agree.
Correct.
Phoenix should be thrilled with that.
Yeah, I know the city of Schofield, um, previously had looked at, uh, doing some improvements at these intersections and they have letters of support from Merrill Iron Steel.
Evidence.
And Hack and, um,
What?
Couple other ones.
Okay.
So, a- again, just to make this project grant eligible, it needs to be in our, uh, five-year capital plan.
What's your pleasure?
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve by Zagami?
Second.
Second by Manel. Any more in the question? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Number five, agreement with MTS LLC for construction services, Hinner Springs Development.
Um, so when we do these, uh, development agreements, uh, we, we take out or we ask the, uh, construction inspection, whatever, whichever firm does that be congl to us?
Mm-hmm.
So they, they sign a contract that this is reimbursable through the development agreement, um, for any costs that are incurred on the, on the inspection. Attorney Eadie look at this, because I guess we really haven't had any look at these and it says he's that concerned about it because of the way this is handled in the development agreement. He did make one suggestion though, that we, um, ask for the, uh, the wording on, uh, it's, um, adding a statement to the effect that, um, however, MTS is liable for failing a timely, failing a timely discovery report, any work that was not performed in accordance with the contract documents and accepted industry standards of if MTS was negligent in the cost to remedy the defect, it's more than what it would have been had it been immediately discovered and timely reported. That would be, um, at the end of construction methods paragraph. That would be the second paragraph under the agreement provisions after the fee statements, rate per hour. So, again, just putting a little bit of a burden there on the, uh, inspector to notify us of any defects that he, that he observes in a timely manner. So, not dominant covers, yes, you hear. So you had a question?
Which?
Insurance.
Insurance, yes. He's provided us a certificate of insurance?
No, we said if you wanted, you have to ask for it.
Joe provided, no, Keith, Keith had it.
He did?
No, yes, yeah.
But the statement here, he said if you need it, we provided to you.
Now, while we asked for it, and he provided for us.
So how much insurance we had?
It was a million dollars of professional liability.
How much million?
Million, three million dollar aggregate.
Yep.
That should just be standard. You shouldn't have to ask. It's kinda silly.
That, that's my problem, you know? That's what I asked for resolution, you know? Keith had a good idea.
So
We should have our own contracts, say, we give you sample contract.
Insurance is bound.
Yep.
Right, so I think one of the elements of our, of our, uh, standard contract would be then explaining what our, what our expectations are for insurance coverage limits.
Well, everything, I, I think you can put whatever you want in there.
Right. And then it's understood when we get these. We're not always going back and asking for them, so.
And, and they have no right to modify it.
Right.
Because they do. They come up with their own explanation or kind of a different wording, yeah, so.
This is our expectation, just what we require, yeah.
So now we're doing, just in that regard, so we are following up with Attorney Eadie to try to develop, or to develop a standard form of agreements. And then obviously there'd be unique features of any scope of services for a specific project. So, try to address that as well.
Good.
Right?
Hey. Uh, Lauren?
So those, the sentences that you read from, uh, Attorney Eadie, that should be included in this agreement?
There'll be an amendment to the construction methods paragraph, which is, um, the page just before the signature page on the agreement. So it'll be at the last, it would be added sentence to the, to that paragraph at the end. If I can read that again, if you like.
Um, no, I, I don't need to be, I was just wondering where it goes.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, I'll move to approve the construction representative contract at Marathon Technical Service with the addition provided by counsel for the Hinner Springs Phase One for the estimated contract range of thirty-nine thousand dollars to forty-four thousand two hundred pending attorney review, which has already been done, of contract length.
Motion by White.
Second.
Second by Zagami. Any more in the discussion?
One question. Um, that's already, this, this contract is then, um, representative in the developer's agreement. Is that correct?
It's, it's, it's no The reference in the development agreement is that the, uh, developer is responsible for any costs incurred for our inspection of the facility.
Okay. Alright. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Number six, recommendation to purchase a new loader.
Alright, um, so we have, uh, three brand loaders in our fleet. Uh, we had one initially slated as a twenty, uh, twenty-one replacement. Uh, we had removed it from the CIP after the public safety, uh, bid was made, but, uh, uh, this past fall, the older one that we were looking to replace blew its engine, it went down to two loaders. We're trying to find some salvage parts to get that one put back together, so they no longer make the parts for that model.
What year is it?
It's a ninety-four. So, um, we went out and got quotes for the, for a replacement loader. We ended up getting quotes back from four different dealers, uh, and then we also had a caveat that if somebody had one that was in stock on the lot, um, you know, we'd look at it if it met our specifications, so, um, John Deere, McCoy, the John Deere dealer did have one uh, in stock up in the U P, uh, for a hundred and seventy-two thousand nine thirty. Um, our initial estimate for a new loader was two twenty-five, so, um, this is less than what we were, uh, thinking it would be for a new loader. I guess, as we go through the
Any of these local, local?
Um, so McCoy is, um, their local office is in Merrill. Um, Fabic is the one over here on J. They also have a machine in stock that's at one seventy-nine, three-ten. Um, airing, uh, Bole, they're over in Green Bay. And then Swiderski was not able to provide a, a loader that met the specifications that we look for, um.
And, and these are only brand new? We never shop used?
Um, we generally look for the, the new ones just because of the, um, the functionalities that we look for. You know, we have the, like, the snowblower attachment, uh, the plow, um, they, they all require different hydraulic requirements, so, um, a lot of people don't have that built in initially.
McCoy's in, uh, U P?
Uh, they're in Merrill. Merrill's
That unit is up in U P?
Yeah.
And its shipping is all, everything
Correct.
For our door is that price?
One seventy-two, nine thirty is the final price.
That's the question I had, whether they were gonna ship it down and add.
Yeah.
No, they actually said they were, I think today they're looking to bring it to the Merrill office, so if, before we wanted to sign, we, we can try it out, test it.
That's the new one right behind Walmart there, up on the highway?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Are they gonna purchase the old one?
Correct, yeah. So that includes getting rid of the current one and, um, the purchase of the new one.
How much you getting for that?
Uh, twenty-eight thousand. So, so the requirement is, we do have it in a running state?
So how many hours is on it?
The current one?
Twenty-seven years?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Well, is, is the twenty-eight that they're giving us, is that the same twenty-eight that everybody else is giving us?
Uh, other people are, like, the Fabic was giving us thirty thousand for the trade-in.
Okay, so it's still not, still over?
Correct, yeah.
But I mean, if they were to give us thirty-six, then that's the better deal.
So, so that was included. So this is the net
That's right, right.
The net price after everything.
The net, okay.
Correct. Cause some of those machines, again, to meet our spec, the, the spec that we needed for the hydraulics, um, so the machine right now, I think, was like one, one sixty, so there was another ten grand or so just in making sure that the functionality, the levers, the hydraulics are made so that it, it works the way we need it to work, um, the day it's delivered.
With all the attachments that
Yes, with, with the various couplers and attachments we have, um, it needs to make sure it's interchangeable.
So it used to be Landy that did that. Who is that person now here?
Um, Jason Leonard was, um, doing that. And Doug Banky in between those two.
What's everybody think?
I'll move to approve the purchase of the in-stock John Deere front-end loader from McCoy Construction in Forestsby for a purchase price of a hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-two, nine hundred and thirty.
That was a picture of the old one?
That, that's the, that's the one that's, you know, if you go look in the shop, it, it's sitting right there right now, because it can't So, yeah, that's
Pretty damn good, too, for, for twenty-seven years old.
Yeah, we, we paint them and, uh
But, I mean, we, we take, we keep, we care. So a motion by White?
Also.
Second by Manel. Any more in the discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Number seven, consideration of restoring the existing play structure or the purch- or the purchase of a new play structure for the Weston Aquatic Center.
So, uh, the, as I've mentioned before, and, uh, earlier this year, uh, when we turned on the play structure at the aquatic center, uh, we had, uh, rust pieces emitting from the structure. Uh, we tried to, run it on and off on a daily basis for about a week and a half to try to see if it would work itself out. Unfortunately, they kept coming out, so we were turning it on and sweeping and vacuuming the pool on a daily basis. Um, we ended up shutting the structure down for the entire season. Um, kids were still able to use the slide, but none of the water functions were working. Um, we did isolate it down to that it was the play structure that was emitting the, the pieces, uh, by running the pump and running some of the floor phones, and those were up and running the entire season. So it wasn't any of the pump and the piping that was causing the, the problem, so. After we figured out that problem, we did, uh, bring it to the park recreation committee. Um, they recommended us looking at, uh, replacement structure. Uh, also, we looked at restoration. Uh, this is an item that was listed in the initial evaluation of the aquatic center um, for replacements, uh, and what their recommendation was at that time was a budget of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace it. Uh, we did get, uh, proposal from Fisher Brothers for the restoration at ninety-nine thousand three fifty, and then we also got a two estimates, one for a new structure from Water Play, uh, with the installation by Fisher Brothers, and then one from CRS with a vortex structure, um, at a budget of two, three twenty-five to three fifty. Uh, the last Monday, the park and recreation committee recommended restoring the existing structure at a cost of ninety-nine thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Um, and
How old is the structure?
Um, it's original from nineteen ninety-nine.
So twenty-one, twenty-two years?
Yeah, and they estimate, estimate that the restoration of the structure will be, uh, will last around the same amount of time that the original structure did. They're expecting twenty years out of it. So they actually sandblasted in, sandblasted the interior of the pipes, removed the corrosion and rust, and then they re-hot dip galvanize the pipes, and then they get coated also after that. So with a play structure like that, all the pipes that are below the surface are stainless steel. Once they get above ground, they go to galvanize, and then it's galvanized all the way till the roof on that structure, which is all PVC. So their proposal includes restoring the structure, restoring any of the fiberglass platforms, steps, and installing a light floor on that, which makes a padded surface, so if somebody falls on it, um, replacing the slide, and then they will build an entire new roof structure, because what they've experienced with restoring other structures is that with that PVC structure up there, for them to prepare it and repaint it, uh, they see failure in the PVC joints. So if you look at, even the roof structure on that structure right there, all that is PVC from that top, the dark glue up to the top, that's all PVC, and it's all, uh, plastic welded in place. So when they go to restore it, they've had problems. They literally have done brand-new ones, brand-new restored, and soon as they install them, they start blowing apart. I'm sure it's due to the prep work, the sanding, you know, any of the prep work that they do on it, so they will build an entire new stainless steel structure for that roof portion.
So that's twenty-two years old, and that's in the, that sits in the water?
Yep.
Right? And that, that is not the slide in the corner?
That is not any of the
Of that slide?
Slides.
Two.
Correct.
That, that, and how often does that have to get repainted in the last twenty-two years?
Um, we've had it repainted twice.
At what kind of a cost?
Um, the last time was seventy-five hundred, and that was somebody coming in and just painting it on-site. Um, we had a painter coming out of Minneapolis and painted it.
But twice in twenty years?
Right.
Alright, and then I know, I know a slide has two, so, and then our total take for last year, or this year, our total take, our total income, not, not, not if we made money or nothing, but how much did we bring in? You know, how many receipts? You know, not the food, just the
Our total, total revenue, I believe, was around one forty. Just, uh, do you know offhand?
Just
We were at ninety
This ballpark is fine.
Yeah, well, we were at ninety, I believe ninety-eight thousand in daily entry, and then we had fifteen, thirty thousand pass sales, I believe, something like that.
So about, if we bought a brand-new structure, about three hundred and fifty thousand, right? That's, you know, and if it lasted the same lifespan, right? So it'd be about sixteen thousand dollars a year to have that there. And I'm just trying to, to equate in my mind, I'm not trying to talk about a forty-year, fifty-year-old story with me because we basically threw hockey pucks in the water of a rectangle municipal pool, and we had a blast. Absolute blast, going down and getting these hockey pucks and, and swimming, cooling off. And, and I still scratch my head when I see my grandkids playing on these structures everywhere we go, because I just, I wonder, is that that necessary? I don't know. And then, so then if we do ninety-nine thousand or a hundred thousand, that's five thousand dollars a year for the next twenty years. And, and then painting and stuff like that. And that doesn't include the slide and all the upkeep on the slide.
Right, so the plastic slide will be replaced with a fiberglass slide? Um, cause our slide, obviously, with the plastic, it fades. Um, right now, it basically has three or four different shades of orange due to the fading.
Right.
We end up replacing usually one or two pieces every two years of the plastic slide, and right now the pieces are going for around fifteen hundred dollars a piece. So we're talking fifteen hundred to three thousand dollars in just slide pieces every other year. Um, if we replace valves, valves are around three hundred and fifty dollars, um, each, and we don't replace valves every year. I'm just saying if we have one fail. Um, just the, the handles for turning the, turning the valves are, um, around two hundred, I think. I'd have to look again, but, um, so there is ongoing maintenance with it regardless. Um, restoration of the structure, they replace, and, you know, all, all existing valves. Make sure everything's functioning the way it is, the way it should, and make sure everything works as it would, brand new.
Lauren?
They, you know, would they dismantle it, or would Village Crew dismantle it and they fix it at their
They will dismantle it and take it to their shop. Um, they have a shop in, uh, Chippewa Falls where they do all the restoration. They don't do the hot dip galvanizing, but they do have a
Party, yeah.
Yeah, they have somebody do that, but they do the rest of the work on their own. Uh, they actually hand-build all the fiberglass slides, replacing slides. And they do have a paint booth, so they can paint it in a stabilized environment, whereas when you're doing it on-site, you're just putting polyurethane on it.
Is that, that's plastic?
No, um, the only part of this plastic on there is the slide and then the roof part itself. So the pipes above the pool level are galvanized all the way up till you get to the roof.
Has it ever been discussed about using powder coating on that instead of
They have done some with powder coating. Um, we actually talked to them and got an estimate from them several years ago about just powder coating the, the steel pieces of it, and the expense is a little bit more than just painting it. Um, but like you said, it does hold up longer.
It gets like porcelain.
Right, it does hold up longer. It's, it does chip easier, um, but, I mean
It's the question.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a good question. Cause, you know, this is just my one opinion. Okay, so we open this pool up for a season of three months? More than three months, less than three months?
Less than three months.
Okay.
Next year's seventy-nine days. This year was seventy-nine day season.
Has there ever been any thought of housing this thing for year-round? Oh, oh, there's no sun, you know, so then we have, we have an area that you can sun out, but then all the garage doors can go up? Eighteen garage doors for the summer, you can run around in and out, but you can shut all the garage doors and still use it year-round. Has that ever been a thought? I, I, I'm just thinking of the upkeep and, and shutting it down for winter and stuff, and I, I'm sure it'd cost a ton of money, but holy man, you know, would the longevity be longer? Would the sun not be fading everything? Would it be just as fun to, you know, with garage doors and an open-air environment with all the stuff outside? Um, would we protect some of these kids that don't have sunscreen on? I have no idea. And, you know, I, I just, in my mind, to try to do this for three months out of the year, and then you shut it all down, and then you have to winterize everything, you know? It, it's just a, I just think it's a ton of effort. And I wonder what the, you know, I know there's no return on investment like, you know, like a private company does, but we're gonna be in the pool business.
Right.
And as much as I think it should be just a huge rectangular cool-off area with just, you know, and not have to be, you know, if they wanna go down to Wisconsin Dells, go on. We, we can't compete with that, but it, for a while, I kinda thought we were, you know, with the slides and all the different things.
And, well, and part of our discussion with the YMCA was that, you know, we don't wanna go run another season without a operating play structure.
Right.
And that, they, they reiterated the same thing. They don't feel like we should, we have the play structure in the pool and then have it not operate, you know?
But, but they are, they are, the Y is huge in the pools.
Right.
And they don't have slides in the play structure in their pool.
They did. They took them out.
Yeah, how long ago?
Quite a few years ago already.
I, I've never, I don't, I don't, I guess I never knew a Y had a play structure in a pool, cause every Y I've ever
Yeah, the Sparks Y here had two slides when they initially opened.
Okay.
Um, they actually removed them. Um, and part of it, part of it's lifeguarding, obviously.
Lifeguarding, yep.
Um, and we know indoor facilities here struggle. I mean, but the, the Grand Lodge is still closed. Their water park has been shut down since May, um, but no intentions of reopening.
That's, that's a mismanagement, hugely.
There's lots of, lots of issues over there.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, indoor facilities, my best year, um, like in the tourist area, like the Dells, I mean, and I can't, I guess, can't believe the lodge couldn't keep functioning, but we know water parks do not make money.
Especially this part north.
So, um, you know, it's one of those things where, you know, we're, we're looking at an option that would provide us the longevity of, like, a new structure. Cause we know new structures are probably not built to the same quality they were back in the late nineties also. So you could get a new structure that wouldn't even last as long as our current one, and you could be replacing it in ten to fifteen years, and then you just spent three hundred and fifty thousand on it.
It's also security, you know, for the manufacturer. I mean, you don't want these things to run forever, otherwise they'd make cars that would run forever. You know, cars don't run forever, but it's, it's by design. Um, Steve?
I'm just curious, is this, um, paid for out of our general tax levy, or is this coming out of our
So this was a CIP, so there would be borrowed funds?
Be borrowed funds.
Yeah.
Is it eligible for doing, funding it through our room tax at all? I'm just curious.
No, we, we
We, we throw some money in every year.
Some of the, some of the room tax dollars go into the CIP for equipment typically though, right?
Well, whatever.
Or whatever.
It goes for anything, so this year, I think, I think I just calculated like fifteen, it's over fifty-four thousand will be going to the CIP for various uses.
Mm-hmm.
Like whatever we need
Okay.
To use those funds for.
We, we, we understand. I mean, we know the facility's high maintenance. Um, most years we budget thirty thousand just for annual maintenance for the facility. Uh, we did drop it down in two thousand twenty-two, just due to staff wage increases and, uh, so, like I said, we know it's expensive to operate. We are providing a service, uh, to the community, and, I mean, there, like I said, there are options out there. I mean, we have the existing plumbing, piping, so there's not a lot to do compared to installing a new structure. All they do is remove what's there, bring it back, reinstall it.
Yeah.
You know?
This will all be done over winter, so we'd have
It'll be all done over winter, it'll be done by spring. So literally, if we give them the go-ahead, they will come and remove it, like, immediately.
That looks pretty tight.
Yeah.
I'm sure when it's in the water, it's, you know, the gleam and everything is
When it's wet, when it's
Then you can play with it, yeah.
It's bad.
But that looks pretty tight.
And, and that's, and they, they all do. I mean, um, cause most of that on there is calcium.
Yeah.
Um, so we do have calcium remover. We do, you know, wax and, you know, do stuff to spruce it up and to maintain it, but all the items that have paint or fiberglass gel coat, they all start to show their wear and tear on it.
Yeah.
I mean, if you look at our slides, they have calcium buildup on them too. Um, you know, that's just
And one more, and I, I, I got meatloaf at seven o'clock, so I'm, I'm trying really hard. So, a lot of the campgrounds that have playground equipment, you know, started this way. So if you go to Warren's, Warren's has got very old, tired equipment that definitely needs to be replaced, but the new ones have the, the boa. Like, especially the one just south of Point, they've got two huge units out there that, that kids can get on.
In the water.
Can't hurt themselves, they're tied down. Can't hurt themselves, they're tied down, they're actually, they, they're incredible. I'm, I'm sure lifespan ain't the same, I'm sure there's, you know, you gotta store it for the winter, but and maybe they don't have the surface area.
And they're, they're quite expensive too, actually.
They are, okay.
C R S, the one that supplied, uh, supplied the uh quote for the vortex structure, they are actually one of the largest dealers for those inflatables.
Okay.
Um, they've approached us before to see if we were interested, and we looked at them, a lot of it has to do with um how many users you can turn over.
Mm-hmm.
And for us, it would have to be placed in the deep end, just due to the area and the depth of the water.
And there's not enough surface area to put one of those structures.
Right, right, cause we even looked at like uh the reverse timing walls, which is a popular thing, there's one in Merrill, there's one at the Rothschild Pool, you know, where you climb up over the water on a timing wall, then you could fall into the water. But turnover for users, you know, you actually have to like put a timer on and time people, cause they could hang out there for ten minutes. When, like a diving board, you can run fifty people through in fifteen minutes where that, you could have three people on there in that time.
I didn't know what you meant by that.
Yeah, so.
How do you explain that?
A lot of that is how many people you serve. So if you look at like the vortex structure, I think it was just over two hundred people. This, the amount of people you could serve, and, you know, the age range we went for was like three to six-year-olds. So the shallow end, the zero-depth area is for the little kids, so we have the water riders, um, you know, we have the play structure, and then as you progress around to the log slices, that's a little deeper water, that's fit for the bigger kids, and then obviously you have the big slides, which are all forty-eight inches and taller, these are thirty-six inch for the slide, uh, like for the new ones, the recommendation is thirty-six inches. Uh, but yeah, it's, it's all about like turnover for, if you have eight hundred people at the pool, you don't want somebody out of.
That's a good point, that's a good.
Period of time.
You're right, I saw that. I, I saw them on, and, you know, I, I, there was no lifeguard out there telling them to get off, but those kids found out about these inflatables, that if you put yourself at a certain area, and then you get three or four kids that all jump into another area, that kid sails twenty or thirty feet. Every time you saw that, they were screaming at them to knock it off, but.
Yeah, and I've, and I've, and I've seen, I've seen.
Put her right out of the pool here.
Yeah, I've seen the ones at River's Edge on their swim pond uh before, and there are a lot of different features out there that, you know, people are changing things up, what they have available. Um, you know, the air pillows are very popular right now too, where they have the air pillows on the ground. Know the.
Oh, sure.
You know, and they can go play on them like a trampoline.
Yep.
Um.
Okay. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Zagami?
Second.
Second by White, any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Uh, motion to move to closed session per nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent E. Uh, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Closed session.
Well, um, motion by Zagami.
Awesome.
Second by Manel, uh, roll call.
Thank God I'm here. Maloney?
Here, uh, yes, aye.
Manel?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Zagami?
Aye.
So carried. We're now in full session? Is it open? Here we go, alright, we are reconvened in an open session, uh, any uh possible action?
A move to go ahead and purchasing this property to uh emanate domain.
Motion by, or Martin, he had a comment.
I was just gonna say that the motion would be to uh, the memorandum of understanding has, has been proposed.
Okay.
Uh, with the terms that have been agreed upon by Weston Ridge Association, Weston Ridge Two Association, Inc.
Is that part of your motion?
Well, you would have to restate this motion.
Oh, okay.
I have to what?
You would have to restate your motion.
To the M O U.
Okay, where is it? Okay. The first one, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'll move the uh approve memorandum of understanding with the Weston Ridge Two Association, Inc. For construction Eastman and process for purchasing property on this land by the Ryan Street wastewater pumping station.
And I'll second that.
Motion by Husheng, second by White? Any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, so carried, uh, three to one. Okay. Uh, anything else on here? We convene an open possible action, remarks from trustees, White?
Nothing, sir.
Zagami?
None.
Manel?
Perfect.
Maloney has nothing, um, our next meeting is uh November fifteenth at six o'clock, next Monday is planning. And.
Public works.
Public works, yep, okay. That's all I got. Motion to adjourn? Or wait, what?
Do you mind saying why you didn't like it?
I, I think it's too expensive, and I think it's, it's been messed up for.
I agree with you, it is.
Yeah, it's way too expensive.
It is.
And I, I, I think that the, the downside is we, we're not gonna be able to get anything done in the correct timeframe, if it's taken how many months to get some seal coating done, or the neighborhood up by a quick trip, um, we can't get it done in time, so to think that we're gonna be getting this done in four, five, six months, and it, it isn't gonna happen. I think a year from now, we'll be smiling if it gets done.
As possible.
And I, I think that adding this unlimited expense for this extended period of time is only gonna add more and more and more and more, there's no, there's no limit to what it's gonna cost. And if they draw, now what if they draw the condemnation proceedings? Because even, even after you begin a process, you then are given the rights to contest it in court. But by approving that M O U, we're locking in, spending two hundred and fifty dollars to them, giving them two hundred and fifty dollars as long as it takes, so if it takes another year? Two years to contest it?
But you're not condemning the land, you're not going through that.
But that's, that's how you're, that's how you're gonna force the acquisition. I'm just saying, I, I, I was exposed to it on some lands that I owned on Grand Avenue, and I just know that how long it can be prolonged unnecessarily.
If that's, if that's our objective.
Well, it's not, it's, it, no, it's just, it's just how the courts, we're getting off topic.